Good evening and welcome to Curriculum Evaluation Committee on Monday, October 24, 2022. It is 6:02 PM and we are in the National North Boardroom. Let's see, first we'll take attendance of the committee. Reagan Lampier here. Neil Claffey.
Here.
Jessica Brown is here. We have a quorum. Also in attendance, we have Dottie Oden from the Board of Education and Dr. Kimberly Sarfi. And we have some guests in the audience. So if you'd like to go ahead, our first item on the agenda is decodable readers.
Yes, thank you. We have an action-packed schedule tonight. We're very excited. I have here, it's my honor to introduce some of our amazing teachers who are going to talk about decodable readers. And take it away, guys. Go up to the podium.
All right. And ladies, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves when you start speaking so that we can put on the record.
Hi, my name is Erin Putnam. I am the ELA coach for the district. I'm going to read just a justification for purchasing the decodable text. Decodable books have an important role in phonics instruction. They help to build confidence in beginning readers by giving the opportunity for daily practice of reading. This reading application is where the learning sticks. Decodable books are written to help practice specific grapheme-phoneme correspondences students have learned. Brain research shows that beginning readers who focus on letter-sound relationships, phonics, instead of trying to learn whole words or memorizing whole words, increase activity in their brains, the part of their brain that is best wired for reading. These books provide readers with the chance to use their knowledge of segmenting and blending skills to read words and text. Decodable books help to encourage children to focus on all the visual components of the word. Children use the visual components to sound out words rather than guess from a picture or predict what the word is from other cues. This will allow children to decode and read any word they come across in their future reading. All books are decodable in that they can be read. The decodability is dependent on the reader and if that reader has sufficient reading ability for the complexity of that text. When a child is a beginning reader, books that are truly decodable are books that include the alphabetic code they have explicitly been taught. However, it's important to notice that decodable texts are not the only texts to be included in beginning reading instruction. Beginning readers also need to be engaged in complex texts that provide rich vocabulary and sentence structures. The combination of these types of texts equips students with the skills they need to become proficient readers.
Thank you, Erin.
Hi, my name is Amy Craig. I'm a second grade teacher at Bicentennial. I've taught first grade, second grade, and I was a reading specialist, all in Nashua. I have my master's in reading and writing and became Orton-Gillingham certified through the Children's Dyslexia and down on Main Street in Nashua. This is a multi-sensory approach which teaches students to read, especially those that struggle to read. I have a passion for reading and writing and I feel very strongly about explicitly teaching young readers direct phonics rules and applying them into their reading and writing. I know how students learn and I know their struggles. Primary students do not learn to read when they have to rely on picture clues or getting their lips learning for the first sound, which have been popular strategies in the past. If we think that a K through second grade student or even a struggling student beyond second grade can decode words like giraffe or elephant, we are wrong. They are simply relying on the pictures. This is not decoding. The goal is as they get older that they will map words and just know them as we do as adults. But young readers are just learning and picture clues do not help them do this. If we as adults were asked to read a medical manual and rely on pictures, I don't think many of us would be successful. Young readers must learn phonics rules and be allowed to apply them with decodable books. Decodable books will allow all primary students and struggling students to apply and practice the explicit phonics skills that they are learning in class. They will practice and reinforce these skills so that students will feel successful and comprehending while they grow and learn to become independent readers. We must have decodable readers in all elementary schools.
So we actually have a couple of other teachers in support of decodable readers in the audience. I don't want to put anybody on the spot. Oh, no. Here we go.
I wasn't going to speak and I don't enjoy public speaking, but I do have a few things to add. I think it's important to follow the science. I feel like Reese... Which button? It's green. Okay, the science tells us that our brains are not wired for reading. It must be taught explicitly. You need explicit, children need explicit instruction in reading. And this is an integral piece, I feel, for what teachers need moving forward. And the statistics also tell us that quite a high percentage of elementary students are not reading on grade level. And if they don't achieve that goal by third or fourth grade, the odds are really stacked against them. And for a number of years here in Nashua, many of my colleagues, including myself, have tried to do this job without the tools, right? So we don't send policemen into their jobs without the tools they need. We don't send a firefighter in to fight a fire without the tools. I feel slightly passionate about this, so I would hope that you would seriously consider this for our teachers. We definitely need this and our kids need it and they deserve it.
Could you just say your name before you sit down?
Oh, I'm sorry. Michelle Quadro, second grade at Birch Hill.
Okay.
Sorry. Didn't mean to jump in there.
Thank you all so much. Erin, if you can just stay at the podium. So one thing that I do, I do want to point out, so I did give the committee some copies of the decodable readers. One of the things that Erin and I made sure to do is to schedule some training for teachers. So if this purchase is approved for our teachers, then we're not just going to give them, you know, over $100,000 worth of material and then never look back. We organized professional development for each grade level and it basically is a, you know, a type of professional development opportunity where teachers will get a bundle of books when they leave. But we want to make sure that they know exactly how to incorporate these decodable readers in their lessons. We want them to understand the science behind decodable readers and why they're beneficial to students. We also, in our contract with TLA, we have some scholarship days because we have such a large contract with them. Teaching and Learning Alliance is the organization that we are partnering with to move our ELA instruction forward at the preschool all the way up to the middle school level. And TLA is going to offer some after-school professional development opportunities specifically focused on decodable readers. And then additionally, the eight lab sites that we have working with TLA will be embedding the decodable readers, if we are allowed to purchase them, into the work that they do with the lab teachers. I don't know if you want to add on to that at all, Erin?
Yeah.
Erin doesn't want to add on. Okay. So we would be looking for a motion. I don't know if anybody has questions?
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the material? We'll start with the committee. And then I won't forget you, Dottie.
So I was, these books look, they remind me of the books that I used to read when I was in elementary school for a second grade. And I was wondering why we haven't had these in the schools.
So I'll tell you why. Because we've moved, so everything kind of comes around again, right? The district has long embraced a balanced literacy type of instructional design and what we are learning about, just like Mrs. Quadro stated, is that it's not intuitive for students to learn how to read. Students have to be explicitly taught. So we are slowly but surely moving towards a more structured literacy approach. And this certainly is part of the structured literacy approach. There was quite a number of years where people thought that reading was intuitive. If you are immersed in a literacy-rich environment, you just learn how to read. And for some kids, they pick up the code really easily. But our data is showing us, along with the data that's nationwide, that unfortunately that approach doesn't work for half of our students. So we are embracing the science and part of that is incorporating decodable texts.
Thanks. Mr. Claffey.
I just had a question about cost. I'm just looking at the invoice. So the unit price? I'm just looking at the, I'm just looking at the first one. So the, does that $50 cover the entire set and then we're ordering eight? That's not $50 per book, is it?
Yes, can I see where?
Sure.
So that is the price for the set?
For the set of eight. So you get eight books for $50.
Yes.
Yeah. So what Erin is saying is that it is the price for the set, not just for one book. That's correct. We also made a conscious effort to incorporate enough titles so that we have more than one title per classroom so that we can have students participate in reading groups.
And Ms. Oden?
I'm here because I'm a former first grade teacher in Nashua. And when I saw this on the agenda, I just had to come to support it. I started teaching back in 1969 with Scott Forsman, a 1947 edition, Jane and Sally. But I had gotten a lot of phonics in my college education at Gorm State College in Maine. So I was able to use a lot of the phonetic approach to reading and I always did. I don't know if some of you are familiar with the old Sullivan reading program, program readers that were very phonetic but very dry, had a lot of violence in them, bang and pop and whatever. But I just want to thank all of you for bringing the phonetics back to education in reading, especially at the elementary level. It is critical. I think if you do research, 50% of the words, you have a phonetic approach to them that you can sound out. Of course, there's the sight words, but I just want to thank Ms. Sarfi and all of you who are helping our kids and doing the right thing for them, giving them a solid background. So thank you 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. So I am in agreement with everyone else up here. I'm really excited about bringing more phonics back to the district. I think the balanced reading approach, the curriculum materials hasn't necessarily, that we've been providing for teachers, hasn't necessarily been truly balanced. And I'm really glad that we're going to, especially for the foundations level, bring back the phonics into the program. I'm really happy also to see that you have a, the professional development added in. It's not just dropping it off in your lap and saying, here, work with this. So I'm really grateful to the program for doing that. I'm really proud of the district for critically evaluating our data and recognizing, as Ms. Quadro has mentioned, that right now we're not where we should be for our expectations and we need to get them higher and we're going to support our students. And I'm really glad about all that. So right now, I would be looking for a motion to recommend to the board that we approve the purchase of the whole phonics decodable readers in the amount of $104,930,000 as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I didn't say that right. Okay. 1-0-4-9-3-0.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
All right.
So moved.
All right. And let's see, so the motion was by Ms. Lampier and seconded by Mr. Claffey. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Yay!
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Go enjoy your night.
You don't get to keep those.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin.
So next up on our agenda, we have a presentation on the Amplify Science Program. Yes, I'm pleased to introduce Monica Tino. We also have Angela St. Lawrence, who is our new K-8 science coach along with Monica. And then we have Beth Wheeler, who was our new elementary math coach.
Hello. So this is our Amplify Science update. We have been implementing the Next Generation Science Standards using Amplify Science as our resource for, this is the fourth year of implementation in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, the third year of implementation in fifth grade, and the first year of implementation in third and fourth grade. This year, our teacher supports for fifth through eighth, we have coaching and coaching cycles. We have a Google Classroom with resources as well as a PD website. Fifth grade worked this summer on ELA integration and we shared that with the rest of the fifth grade teachers. It was a small group of us, so they're looking at integrating that within reading. And our next step is with writing. At the middle school level, we're having department meetings with PD. And we are also doing PLC visits with different groups within the district. In third and fourth grade, our supports are a little bit different. This is the first year of their implementation, so we have a Google Classroom with lesson plans and resources for them. We have five check-in meetings throughout the school year to check in with them. And we also offer coaching support, lesson modeling as well. So just to talk a little bit about the NGSS, it's the Next Generation Science Standards that these teachers this year in third and fourth grade are implementing. We have to remember, it's not only about what we teach, but it's how we teach as well. And that's the big difference between these standards. And that's why they've been kind of so big for us. So to give you an example, I just wanted to share with you two quick classroom examples. Both of these classrooms have the exact same learning objectives, but they're a little bit different and you'll see why. So first, we have Mr. Lang's classroom, who is teaching a unit on matter cycling. And in his first lesson, he introduces to the class that we're going to be learning about matter cycling. And he asks them if they've heard the word matter before. And he puts the definition on the board. Matter is everything around you, matter has mass and takes up space. And then he, when he thinks that everybody has written it down and gotten it, then he goes on to show them a video about matter with different examples. In lesson two, he talks to them about matter cycling in the ecosystem and he draws this on the board for them, showing them the carbon cycle. And then he has them play a board game about the carbon cycle. And in the third lesson, he tells them that the topic for the day is photosynthesis. And he explains to them what photosynthesis is and puts the equation on the board and has them copy it. Then he tells them that they're going to work on an experiment in which they're going to take, measure the oxygen bubbles that come out of that and then they're going to graph it and understand it. So that's classroom number one. Classroom number two is Ms. Snow's classroom. And her science unit, remember, these are the same exact standards. Her classroom, the unit is called Where Does Food Come From and Where Does It Go? And in her first lesson, she has the kids tasting maple syrup. And they look at nutritional labels and they figure out that there's glucose in all of these things. They find that's one of the molecules that's in all of them. And then they start to think about that and they're like, well, wait a minute. What do plants eat? Where do they get food from? How are they eating? Well, what are the things that plants need? They need air and light and water and so on and so forth. And then that leads them into their next lesson, or that leads them to a lot of questions that lead them into their next lesson where the teacher brings in some examples of different food molecules, what they look like. And then she shows them that the composition of air also has some of those molecules too, which is pretty interesting. So then in their third lesson, she connects the lesson from the day before to this third lesson by asking them to summarize what they noticed when they compared the air to food molecules and what they want to investigate. Students offered ideas, so they started to really investigate and plan what they wanted to do next. So they decided that they were going to investigate by getting a detector and some plants and water and try to figure out if they could see any gases coming out, what was happening, because that's what they thought was happening. And then the class thinks a little bit about analyzing their results at the end. They make a prediction. Do they think that the air molecules are going to increase? The carbon dioxide or decrease? And they analyze their data and then they discuss their data. And they talk about what they think is happening and if they need any more information to go next. So when we compare these two classrooms, the first classroom, the students are given information, right? He was writing it on the board. This is photosynthesis. This is the lab you're going to do. Students are given labs, they're memorizing facts. This was before the Next Generation Science Standards. With classroom number two, we have 3D lessons. We have students figuring out what's going on, they're engaging in phenomena. Students' questions are driving the learning and we have lesson coherence. Today's lesson is connected to tomorrow's lesson and it was connected to yesterday's lesson. It's not just all of these lessons in isolation. And this is what it looks like when you're teaching and learning with the Next Generation Science Standards. So just to give you another idea, how is science instruction different with NGSS? This is how we used to teach. We picked a subject, right? We're teaching physical science, life science, earth and space science. And we carried out investigations, the investigations that our teachers gave us. This is how we learned science. This is how I taught science before in the Next Gen Science Standards. But in reality, scientists do all of these things. They ask questions, they develop and use models. These are all the things that scientists do. So we're not just concentrating on, when we're instructing science anymore, of just investigations. We're doing all the things that scientists do. We also add another dimension to that and that's cross-cutting concepts. We are thinking like scientists. We're looking at patterns, whether we're studying space science or life science, we see patterns and that's how we're starting to think like scientists. So we call the subjects that we're learning, the disciplinary core ideas, all the ways that we're being like scientists, science and engineering practices, and all the ways we think like scientists are our cross-cutting concepts. And this is what we call 3D learning. We're doing what scientists do, we know what scientists know, and we're thinking like scientists. Every single lesson with the Next Generation Science Standards incorporates all three of these. Now, we're not doing all the science practices at once, obviously, but we're incorporating a science and engineering practice in every lesson that we do. So this is, you know, a teacher. So right now, we've been doing this, this is our fourth year in middle school, our third year in fifth grade, our first year in third and fourth. This is what I think of as these teachers, right? They're wearing a cape because it's an amazing job that they're doing, but they're carrying this big, huge boulder because this is a huge lift for teachers. It's, again, not changing just how we, just what we're teaching. It's not like we're just going, oh, well, I'm not teaching earthquakes and volcanoes anymore. Now I'm just, you know, I'm going to teach about life cycles. They're changing how they teach. And so it is a huge lift for them. Fortunately, we have Amplify Science, which is our high-quality resource for implementing the Next Gen Science Standards. Just to point out, this is a screenshot from Ed Reports. Amplify Science K-8 is the only resource that meets expectations. So if you're looking for something that helps you teach the Next Gen Science Standards, there's only one option right now. This is the only one that meets the expectations. And I would like to share with you tonight, I am fortunate enough to have some teachers that are willing to talk about their teaching with the Next Gen Science Standards and Amplify and also share that with us tonight. I have a video that's not quick, but I'm just going to show you the first part of it. This is a video that Laura Dyer shared with-
My name is Laura Dyer and I am the Assistant Principal over at Bicentennial Elementary School. When Monica asked me if I would share some feedback about Amplify Science, I was happy to help her after everything that she's done to support me and my teaching and all the wonderful things that she continues to do for our teachers and students within the Nashua School District. So tonight, it's my pleasure to share with you a bit about Amplify Science curriculum, both through my experience as a classroom teacher and now as an administrator. During the 2020-2021 school year, I was facing a daunting task of teaching a brand-new science program, completely remote. Little did I know what an amazing experience this would become for me. The Amplify Science curriculum encourages students to actively investigate compelling questions by finding and evaluating evidence and then developing convincing arguments to support that evidence. Because of the Amplify curriculum, my science lessons were brought to life over Zoom. Amplify Science for grades K through 5 is a phenomena-based science curriculum that is designed to give students engaging, realistic experiences that mirror how scientists and engineers actually work. I'm going to share a little bit about one of these fifth-grade units that quickly became a fan favorite for my students and I. The Modeling Matter Unit immersed my students to take on the role of food scientist. This unit had them exploring many different materials and mixtures, had them engaged in scientific practices, and allowed them to consider ideas about mixtures at both an observable scale that they could later go on to apply and think about ideas in a nano-scale. And the nano-scale was digitally through the technology simulation components to Amplify Science. The Modeling Matter Unit presented students with the unit phenomena, giving my students engaging, realistic experiences that mirror how food scientists actually work. Students planned out how to perform the unit investigations based on what we are learning in class and the materials that were sent home in their at-home learning kits at the time. Students participated in the investigation using their at-home material kits. They made observations and connected it to the background knowledge. We've gotten great feedback from our teachers. The Amplify Google Classroom and coaching opportunities with Monica have helped deepen my students' knowledge and achievement because it deepened my knowledge first. Because of the affirmation, reflection, feedback, and communication that happened when my students and I needed it, everyone grew and became far more competent with the Amplify Science curriculum. That's a reflection from a fifth-grade teacher from last year. Coming from a fourth-grade teacher, what I love most about each of the Amplify units is that our students are asked to take on the role of a scientist or engineer in order to investigate a real-world problem. These problems provide relevant 21st century context through which students investigate different scientific phenomena. This engages our students and the enthusiasm I am seeing from my students has been unmatched to any other science curriculum that I've previously taught.
So that's Laura Dyer, who is an Assistant Principal at Bicentennial Elementary and she was a fifth-grade teacher during remote learning. And I will turn it over to Angela St. Lawrence, our other science coach.
Hi there. Good evening. So I've had the opportunity to work in a fourth-grade classroom over the past several weeks and I've been teaching a unit called Energy Conversions. Students have had the opportunity to role-play being systems engineers while trying to figure out why a fictitious town keeps having blackouts. This is the class that I've been working with. Students have had to work through a series of investigations using Sims on the computers and building simple electrical systems to figure out what makes a system work and fail. Through various small group and whole-class discussions, students have worked to find reasons why the blackouts occur and designed solutions for remedying the situation, all while working to meet criteria proposed by the town's mayor. During a particular stage in the unit, the students were working to design a wind turbine, the picture to the left, as a possible solution to give more energy to the town to reduce blackouts. One particular group designed theirs similar to that of an anemometer, using cups to capture the air. During the testing phase, the group placed their design in front of the fan and watched as their wind turbine spun, both at high and low speeds, coming from any direction, meeting the criteria of the design. The expressions on their faces were everything, as you can see that one kiddo pumping his fist. During another discussion toward the end of the unit, an EL student asked if he were to connect the wires we have used in class to a cell phone and then to a solar panel, would it work because it gives energy? The fact that he used the word "energy" and understood the parts of the system that needed to make an electrical system work was his way of showing his understanding. It was like a light bulb went off. These are the moments we live for as teachers. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Wheeler and I had the opportunity to teach Amplify Science for two years as a fifth-grade teacher at Bicentennial Elementary School. I found using these materials had a positive effect on my students' engagement with science because they were using, and because they were using the NGSS science and engineering practices daily, it gave them a deeper understanding of the core ideas we studied. The anchoring phenomenon, hands-on concepts, and SIM all aided in building understanding and engagement. But the standout component to me were the text sets that accompany each unit. These sets not only elevated science understanding, but became an integral part of my ELA instruction last year. As my students and I use them as mentor texts for many of my reading and writing- writing units and lessons. When writing informational pieces, my students use the texts they had been exposed to in two prior units as research materials. The fact that they had content knowledge and vocabulary built to access the information in these texts made all the difference in every student's success as a researcher. Every student was reading with better understanding because they had access to high-quality texts that had a connection to what they were learning in science and this resulted in the best writing my students have ever produced in 18 years in the classroom. I'd also like to speak from a parent's perspective. This year, I have a third and fifth grader in the district. My husband and I are thrilled to find that the anchoring phenomenon that accompanies each unit is giving our son and daughter an entry point to talk about what they are learning in science class at home. We are having meaningful and very fun conversations about their thinking about science concepts around the dinner table, which they are initiating by telling us about what they are wondering or learning about the current unit's phenomenon. I love having this connection to what my kids are doing at school and I love their confidence in talking about what they are learning. As a teacher and as a parent, I feel confident that Amplify Science supports learning in the best possible way across multiple subjects. I can't wait to see how it elevates students' learning across the district as it is implemented in more grade levels.
I have a few letters and I'm just going to pick two to read real quick, just in the interest of time. "I am a seventh grade science teacher at Elm Street Middle School. I've been teaching in room 303 on Team 7-2 since 2000. Hard to believe that it has been that long. I was slow to embrace the program after working hard on a pilot for a different resource and a rocky rollout of the resource at the middle school level. However, now that I'm on the third run-through, I am really starting to see all of its advantages. It was awesome to have a digital resource source during remote with slides and videos. The simulations and the readings are top-notch. Now that I have been through the program a few times, I understand the learning progressions. The patterns and the routines are perfect for middle school students. In each chapter, students work to find evidence by reading, doing hands-on investigations and exploring the simulations. Then students revise their understanding with modeling tools, write and share routines and science seminars. It is a really, it is really smart the way that it is planned out, especially applying their learning to a new problem in Chapter Four. That is higher level thinking. As for those that say that it is too scripted or not hands-on enough or boring, I think that like any resource, it is all in the presentation. An experience, as an experienced educator, I really had to let go of some of what I had been doing and trust the process. This is only my second year teaching rock transformations and chemical reactions in seventh grade. I am excited to go through those units a second time and do it with more confidence and my own style. Eighth grade is just now implementing their new units for the first time this year. It will be neat to see how these students coming up to the middle school now will do with, with the program, having started with Amplify in earlier grades in elementary. I can't tell you what using a common resource like this has done for discussions at our PLCs. We are actually able to talk about teaching and learning in a totally different way. We need to stick with this resource to full implementation to see the long-term data. Too often, we have changed course on things during the implementation dip, never to see the true results. I hope that we will continue to use Amplify at the middle school level."
Thank you. That was fantastic presentation, very much. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Sarfati?
I just wanted to add, so right now, we're not looking for a motion, but we will, when budget season comes around, we will be asking to renew our subscription at the middle school level and then we will be looking to implement Amplify Science in grades two and grade one. Monica would like to see it in grade K as well, but we can't be so greedy, Monica. I just want to say just really quickly too, I mean, so all five of our instructional coaches are here right now. These ladies are so incredibly valuable to our district. I can't stress enough how much value they bring to us. So I definitely just want to kind of give them, give them accolades and just recognize all the work that they do every day.
Thank you. It really has been a joy to have you come in so regularly and update us on what's really going on in the classrooms and giving us little mini lessons here. It's been really interesting and to see the transition, because I think there were some growing pains at first with Amplify, but to see now that a few teaching cycles have gone through, that teachers really are embracing it. I think ultimately, the students will see that transition and the results because of it. So that's fantastic. Does anyone have any questions on the committee? All right. Thank you for being here. We have another presentation this evening. We have Mr. Joe Manzoli from the Nashville YMCA to talk about the greater Nashville expansion
Good evening. I don't have anything nearly as cool as what you just heard and I'm looking forward to reading Pig with a Wig myself, so. Yeah, we wanted to just share some updates on some of the work we've been doing with the school district, our Power Scholars Academy, our superhero training academy, as well as our Prescribe the Y program. So quite a few things to show, share with you. Our Power Scholars Academy, we just wrapped up our fifth summer, serving more than 300 scholars in grades one through nine, rising first through ninth graders. It's a five-week program that we run in three schools, primarily serving students from the Title I schools, though that's something we're going to look to expand in the future. And those kids get, it's a free program for those five weeks that students work with in small groups, with teachers in the morning, working on math and literacy. And then in the afternoon, they're participating in enrichment activities. There's a field trip each Friday and we're really proud of the impact that we're seeing with that program. We've developed great partnerships with the school district and with our friends at 21st Century Learning Center and other community partners. This summer, we saw some, some great success. As you've heard, there's amazing work happening during the school year with really dedicated teachers throughout the school year. What we also know is that for many students, when the summer hits, we start to see a bit of a slide. And statistically speaking, from students who are from under-resourced neighborhoods can see on average, a slide in both math and reading of up to three months. It's usually an average of two and a half months. What we saw this summer was an increase in, in math and a flat maintaining of levels in literacy. So we saw, you know, a net gain across, across the board from where kids who wouldn't have been in this program would have been had they not been there, to where they were going through the program. And those are great. We're very proud of those results to see the kids are at least maintaining, if not seeing a gain in those five, five weeks. But beyond that, what we're very proud of is, is the impact that we're seeing in kids' investment in their own education, in the partnership with the families and what it's providing for the teachers. So we hire dozens of teachers and assistants through the summer and a couple of statistics just from the surveys we sent out and do they have this information? They do. Okay. So you'll see on the front page, just some of the highlights we pulled out that I was very proud of. So 92% of the teachers say that working in the program helped them develop their professional skills. So it's more than just a summer job for them. They're also gaining that professional development. 94% of the parents who were surveyed say that their child were more confident as a result of the program. And 95% of the students say that they believe they, they can get better at things by working hard. So providing that sense of achievement for those students, we hope carries with them into the school year. A few of the areas that, as we looked through the data from the summer, that, that we see moving forward, just figuring out a way that we can connect more deeply with, with parents. The parents are very involved with their kids, but we, we heard from both parents and teachers and, and other staff that we'd like to get a closer connection and be able to provide more up-to-date feedback as the, as the summer goes on. We also saw a bit of a disconnect and you can see throughout the survey, we had a social, emotional learning curriculum that is part of the program, but we're not quite seeing some of the gains that we would like to see in those areas. And so as we move forward and look to next summer, those are some of the areas we're going to focus on. So I'll pause there. There's a lot of data in front of you and what was shared and just to ask if there's any questions related to the Power Scholars Academy.
Anyone have any questions from the committee? I think you've done a great job explaining it so far and we do have the information in our packet here, which is pretty thorough.
Great. So, so another program that we're very proud of, that we had worked with the school district over the years and, and small sort of starts and stops over the years, but we were able to expand a little bit more last year and this year we've gone full boat, is with our superhero academy. And superhero academy starts with a belief that we have in the way we work with kids that if, if we provide them with more of a sense of achievement, more of a sense of, of themselves, that they'll be more successful. And success can show up in a variety of ways. And we've seen, we've worked this program at different age levels in, in a couple of different districts. And this year, we were very proud to be able to go full in, full on with offering superhero academy in all of the elementary schools. So this fall, we started in six of the schools. That, that group will be wrapping up in a few weeks and then the other six schools will get the program. So we've split the program into two different pieces. So superhero training is for kindergarten and first grade and it's really helping kids make that transition to school, understanding their role as superheroes, that they can have strong character, a desire to give back to their community and they create their superhero personas and capes and masks and they have a little graduation ceremony at the end. We're also working with all of the fifth graders as they start to think about what leadership might be in their community. They participate in superhero leadership academy. And so they're working through a curriculum that we designed with Riviera University around positive psychology, again, helping kids to see their, their present and future in a more positive way. And so we're, I think about five weeks into the program and we've gotten amazing feedback from teachers, from principals, from other school leadership. We have full-time superhero coaches, that, that's their job title, that are going out to the schools every day. I get to see them kind of either before or after the day when they come back to the Y and they're just glowing from what they've been able to accomplish during the day. So it's, it's off to a great start. Again, we'll, we'll rotate to the other six elementary schools in a few weeks. They'll work in those schools for eight, eight weeks and then they'll come back to this first cohort to work with the students again. So those students are going to get that, those activities throughout the school year. And then one, one further program that we are very excited that we've been able to expand. So for the last 14 years, we've run a program called Prescribe the Y and, and that's been in partnership with local pediatricians, with kids who are struggling with weight and understanding, you know, healthier lifestyles. And so for the last 14 years, local pediatricians have been able to refer their patients to the Y for a free program where they come to the Y, they, they meet with one of our fitness staff and they play games and just become more comfortable with physical activity. They also work with nutritionists to understand what's healthy, what's not, and their families have gotten involved. And one of the things that we've always struggled, and we've seen really amazing results from that program, but one of the things that we've struggled with is that not every kid sees their pediatrician on a regular basis and even those who do maybe see them once a year. And so we knew that there are kids that, that had a disconnect there. Over the summer, I bumped into a former employee of ours who actually used to work in that program is now the school nurse at Dr. Crisp. And she had said, hey, Joe, I remember about 10 years ago, you saying, wouldn't it be great if we could work with the schools directly because those nurses are seeing those students on a regular basis? Can we work, can we figure that out? And so she and our staff have figured, figured out a way to do that. And so every week, we have staff are going over to Dr. Crisp and working with the entire fourth grade, or the entire fourth grade will get the program throughout the year. Again, just learning healthy habits, understanding what's in that Gatorade that they're drinking and, and just having fun with physical activity. So just another way that we've been able to expand our partnership to, to make an impact on the kids in the district and to help place positive, caring adults in the lives of these kids. So.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Manzoli?
Just quickly, thank you. The, the survey data that we have, that's just for the Power Scholars, right?
Correct.
So there's, there weren't any surveys yet on the superhero?
Yeah, a little too early yet and, and we haven't, we haven't identified a way to assess that program quite yet. We have in the past with, when we ran a version of that program in another school district, we had some pre and post assessments, but it was really with the teachers and what they were noticing, wasn't the most scientific data in the world. But we definitely saw in, in that case, great evidence of kids enhancing and expanding their self-esteem. We've got some real anecdotal evidence of the impact of that program. Kids just, you know, I remember the first year we ever ran that, that program, the superhero training program. We had a student who had great anxiety about coming to school and, and just getting him off the bus every day was a 30-minute challenge. And after going through that program, not only was it with the bounding off the bus, but he was participating in class. So we've got a lot of examples of that and we'll be collecting that throughout the, the year, so some of that anecdotal evidence. And then we're, we're going to work on the best way to really assess the impact of that program beyond just people enjoying it.
So, and I actually want to also commend you on trying to expand the Prescribe the Y and the nutrition benefits and like promoting the healthy lifestyles. I think there's so many kids that need it and I'm glad that you're being able to bring it to an entire class and I think it would be fantastic to get, bring it to the district. I'm actually, I'm very familiar, I'm a former Y employee and I'm really, that program is excellent program and the kids remember what they learned through the whatever six month or a year-long cycle and they continue to apply it to things in their lives later. So, you know, in little bits and pieces. So I think, I'm really glad that you're partnering with us. Thank you. Anyone have anything to add? No? And, well, thank you, Dr. Sarfati.
Thank you. Again, we're very thankful for our community partners like Joe and the staff at the Y.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have a data update from Jay Foster. And Jay, will you tell us what J stands for? Jonathan, I apologize. It says J in our presentation, so I was like, oh, I should probably know that. How are you? Thank you for joining us this evening.
Hi there. I am Jonathan Foster. That's what the J is for and I am the data analyst at the district. So, you know, I think Kimberly invited me here just to sort of introduce myself. I think the position is relatively new to the district. I am relatively new to the district. So just to put a face to the name and give you an idea of what I do, what I've been doing and what I plan to do. So data analyst is, can really be a whole bunch of things, but how I think about it in the context of my position with Nashville Public Schools is, it boils down to three things. One, we have 10,400 and change students in our district. It's difficult to look at all of those things at once. I have a unique set of tools and experience to be able to look at that and cut up the data and understand it from a high level and provide meaningful insights to our leadership and all the coaches that were here today so that they can understand, you know, the impact of what their curriculum, what their curriculum has on students and make measurable outcomes, you know, so we can, we can understand that progress. Number two is what I have written down as process refinement. Number two is what I have written down as process refinement. So with 10,400 students, you know, we have to be organized in the way that we think of things, the way that we collect information, and at the end of the day, we need to be able to report on that information. So, you know, when any department or a coach is thinking about doing something, I've tried to be a valuable asset to them so that they can think about this process all the way through before it even happens. You know, where are we going to start, square one, and what are we going to do with all of this once the process is complete, and how are we going to improve upon it at the end of the day? So, you know, I try to think about that before the process happens and, you know, so we can make use of all of this valuable information that we have. And then the third thing, I was thinking about this, you know, when I had my interview, I started in March, I was interviewing in February, it's like, I want to be a data ambassador because people think about big data, and it's cumbersome, and it's like, this is another thing that I have to think about. But when I am sitting with someone, I want them to feel empowered with the information that they have, and that this isn't an extra task for them, but this is a tool that they can use to make their job easier. And that's something that I've tried to encourage with everyone I've worked with so far. So just to give you an idea of the few things that I've done since I started in March, I've been working closely with the ELL department, Bob Chopra, and sort of looking through the Department of Justice, their settlement agreement, reading through that, understanding all of the elements that we need to be on top of, and, you know, what kind of information do we need to gather in Aspen that we weren't gathering before? And working with the tech department to make sure that that's in there, and then making sure that that information is flowing through to our tool elevation to make sure all our end-users, teachers, case managers, and our district's leaders have access to this and can understand what's going on. And then finally, you know, one of the points in that settlement agreement is doing a longitudinal analysis to look back at a cohort of students over a few years and understand the progress that we've made. So, you know, I, since I've, looking at this from square one, and, you know, an individual student's data point, their access scores, their grades in the classroom, their teacher feedback, we can look at that over the course of time, see how long it takes them to, you know, graduate out of the program and go to monitored status. So, you know, that's one example. I also serve on our special education's leadership team to make sure that we are working towards compliance with New Hampshire DOE standards. I believe this is something that's relatively new. They have this rubric that they grade all the districts on the state in, and it's a lot. It needs, it requires a lot of data and understanding of the methodology of how the state is calculating all of these scores within the rubric. So I sort of tore that rubric apart and, you know, explained the key things that we can do as a district to get into compliance in certain areas. I also speak with the DOE. We have a consultant who works with us, and I can leverage them to understand some of the things that aren't crystal clear, and because, you know, I know how to talk about these business rules and metrics and understand, you know, the nuts and bolts of the situation, I can ask these questions and then take them back to, you know, our special education leaders so that they can in turn make the changes that are needed to be in compliance. So, you know, I think there's probably three dozen metrics, if I had to remember off the top of my head, and, you know, I've taken them all apart and explained them all, and, you know, we're making progress on that front. I also look at our SAS data. Just last week, I was looking at the state dashboard, and it's not particularly useful for our district the way that it stands, but what I can do is I can download all of the data, make a custom dashboard for our leaders so that it makes sense for our district. And just to give you a sense of the scale of that, you know, we have 10,400 students, they get scored in three subject areas, well, ELA in math for most of them, and science in fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. And within each of those subject areas, they get scored in two to about eight different sub-subject areas. So when you scale all of that out, that was 85,000 rows that we needed to be able to look at all at once. And we can break that all down, and I can do it by school level, I can do it by grade level, we can look at students of certain proficiencies and see how they're performing in different areas. So, you know, we're meeting later this week to go through that and understand the different implications of that data and how we want to break it down further, and I can tie in our very specific Nashua data from Aspen into that data set. So integrating these two things to make a very personalized data set to give us the, you know, the most power with our data that I don't think probably existed before. I'll rattle off a couple of more. I work with Project Succeed, the Boys and Girls Club, understanding the students that have come into that program and tying in their personal information to see the impact that that has had on them before and after the program. I work with our assistant business director to streamline and automate some of our annual state reporting. I work with all of the coaches that were just in the room to streamline their assessment processes and be able to understand how to best administer those tests so that we can get the best data so that we can understand those outcomes, and, you know, it's a constant cycle of improvement. And, you know, at the end of the day, I am here to try and champion the use of new technology. Like I said before, you know, sometimes there's fear with new technology, that this is a new thing that I have to learn. I'm here to help people embrace it and use it as a tool to help them do their job and free up time for the things that count more in the classroom, you know. I think that this technology can save people a lot of time and give them more energy to do, you know, more important things. But at the end of the day, my overarching objective is to be helpful. I want to streamline processes, I want to make everyone's work easier, more effective, and positively impact the students at our district. Thank you very much for your time, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Foster. I'm really glad that you joined us tonight, and I actually, I'm really excited to hear you use the term "data ambassador," because I think a lot of times we fear honest assessments and using different metrics to measure things, but really, we want to use that information so that we can grow and not in a punitive way. And so I like the idea that you want to use data in a system of empowerment. Because I do think it's, that's what we need to move the district forward. And Dr. Andre was in here at the full board meeting last week talking about the One Nashua mission and to how to grow everybody together. And the other thing that I really liked was the fact that you take your perspective of helping educators kind of decode the, the, there's a lot, it can be very daunting to look at spreadsheets and look at all these different, you know, the vernacular of what it is you do as a data analyst. And then you can bring that back and bring it into something that we can actually apply in the classroom and our curriculum and that kind of thing, so I like that. So when you're talking about the use of streamlining our processes and taking the things with Aspen, and we have the SAS data, which a lot of times when that comes in, it's a little, it's, we don't have a real-time use to apply it, how far out are we from being able to use our daily or weekly assessments and having students and teachers and everyone have that information accessible so that we can use it to move forward? Are we close to having that system in place?
I think it's a question of, so one of the things Kimberly and I have been working on is the assessment calendar, and we want to make sure that we're getting all the competencies in from end of August until, you know, whenever SAS is, in May or June, and making sure we're hitting all the spots that we need to hit before, you know, the big test. So, you know, we're incorporating that in a couple of different ways. One of the tools that I've liked a lot is a tool called formative assessments that the World Language Department in the high schools had just, they piloted last year, that has since expanded to all of high school. What I like about that tool is that it's sort of a layer that the teachers can use to organize their thoughts and make sure, you can tag like competencies to a specific worksheet to an assessment, and you can track a student's progress in all of these competencies over time, and you can get like real-time status of all this. It's not, it's not going to be a mystery when you get to the state assessment, say, well, I wonder how the kids are going to do, because you'll know all the way along what competencies they hit and how successful they'd been throughout the whole school year. I've been in the calls with, you know, our principals, with the formative vendor leaders, and the work that's been happening there has been very promising. You know, we'll see how much further we can expand that, but I think that the model that that tool has set helps provide some of that real-time information that you were speaking about. You know, so at the end of the day, that's, that's a big step forward, I think.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad to hear that, and I'm glad that we're investigating, you know, we need to invest in the tools to make sure that it's accessible. Because I think also, from a student perspective, I'm glad the teachers absolutely can see where their students stand and areas that they need to refocus. And then from a student perspective, about building confidence in their own abilities and their own understanding and saying, hey, you know, I keep falling short in this area, what do I need to do to get to where I need to be? So, this is, and then also see the way they see successes as well. So, does anybody else have any questions?
I just want to say I'm pretty impressed with the fact that you've been able to break down the Department of Education statistics and actually use them, because I've seen some of those websites and they're just, it's like completely incomprehensible to me. So, yeah, I think that's really good.
Thank you. You know, it's, it takes, I guess, just a conversation with them and understanding what they're asking, and they need to be able to explain what they need from us, and then I am in a unique position to be able to understand all of the business rules that they've applied, to count the things that they need to count, and I can explain how they're counting the things that they're counting, and, you know, turn that into action and, you know, improve our outcomes the way that they see fit.
There is so much behind-the-scenes work going on that Jonathan did not talk about when it comes to all of our online resources. One of the things we really want to examine is usage, and we want to also make sure that our online resources are helping to move students in terms of their academic growth. So Jonathan has worked tirelessly with IT and also with all of the reps from the different companies that we use with regard to the online resources to make sure that he's able to extract all of the data that we need. And then he goes ahead and he compiles it into reports that are comprehensible to people like us. There's just so much going on behind the scenes. Like I said, the work that Jonathan has done with our coaches, I don't think that we should kind of gloss over it. One of the things that he's done at the elementary level is develop a mechanism for us to be able to collect data from teachers, more mid-cycle and long-cycle data, rather, but the mechanism allows us to be able to really drill down into our areas of unfinished learning in our, in our individual classrooms, our grade levels, and then across our schools. Also gives, the data points give the principals and the teachers talking points during their PLCs so that the PLCs are really meaningful. So I just, you know, it's funny, because Dr. McKinney used to refer to Jonathan as the whiz, and it's not for no reason. Anything I've asked him to do, he just turns around and he delivers. So just really glad that he's here, he's been extremely valuable, and, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, it was a pleasure to meet all of you.
All right. Thank you so much. We're glad you could join us this evening, this was really interesting.
Thanks.
So, something is actually missing from the agenda that you see, it's in my, it's in my packet. We have 21st Century here, and they're going to talk about a conference that they attended. Is it okay if we sneak that in?
Absolutely, come on in.
All right, come on over, Gail Casey.
Good to see you again and meet you for the first time. I'm just going to pull up our slideshow, and I will tell you that I timed it, and it's, should be about 10 minutes, so I'll try to keep it going here. Can you just say your name so I can read it? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My name is Gail Casey, I oversee the 21st Century Extended Day Programs for the Nashua School District.
My name is Autumn Anderson-Furman, I'm the site coordinator for Sunset Hikes.
Thank you. So, the Beyond the Bell National Conference is a conference that's put on by foundations, they've been doing it for 25 years, and their primary focus is on working with out-of-school time professionals. And so those are folks that work with students outside of the school day. And I did, you will get a copy of this, and everything is hyperlink, so you'll be able to kind of go and do a deep dive if you really want to. In 21st Century in Nashua, we have high expectations of our staff, and so prior to going to the conference, we look at every workshop available, and then we negotiate amongst our team who gets to go to what, because no two staff can go to the same one. So every staff attends different workshops, and then they're expected to collect materials and content from those workshops, and then they present to the rest of the team between the months of March and June. So we meet every week, and we will do a round robin and sort of go through all the different workshops that people attended. They typically fall into these five categories. The language will change every year depending on what's going on at the, what the priorities of the federal government are, because this is a federal government grant. And then in addition to programmatic workshops, they also talk about compliance. And so in front of you, there's a long list of different things that we report on every year to the Department of Education. These are funds that are, it's a federal grant that goes to the New Hampshire Department of Ed. It's a competitive grant, and so every five years, we are competing against other communities across the state so that we can continue to, or after-school programming for our students. So on here are things like program sustainability, in the event that we do not get funded, we need to have written plans for those. We have an advisory board made up of community stakeholders, community engagement, staff development, we look at family literacy and engagement, diversity, equity, inclusion, and then measuring programmatic outcomes and utilizing program data. So we are doing this, it's a, the idea of 21st Century programs is to complement the school day, but school day, but we track every minute that every student in our programs is attending our programs. And we have to report on all of those things. So we have to make sure that we are informed of best practices to do that. The feds also came up with new measures, and they, the state added to those measures. The Government Performance Results Act is something that now 21st Century programs in the state of New Hampshire are required to look at. It looks at SAS data, and as our, as John was speaking before, I was thinking, oh, I should probably meet with him, because now he's here. So we do look at SAS data, and we really compare students who attend 21st Century programs against kids who don't attend 21st Century programs within the same school over a period of three years. And we're doing that to show that this will have an impact in a variety of different measures. So these are the measures that we have to report on and that we pay attention to using a variety of different data points. We also have a system called TransAct. It used to be called KAN, and that's where we house all of the 21st Century data for every student who attends our programs across seven schools. That's very wordy, but again, you will get a copy of this, and you can check it out. In addition to workshops, we also had a variety of keynote speakers and expert panels. These people are pretty interesting, and I would recommend, like, if you did have time and you want to check it out, they really speak to an audience of professionals who, you know, and Autumn will speak maybe about her own experience, but I think it's important to remember that in after-school, site coordinators don't have a team of people in the building. And so what happens is, we're asking these professionals to be responsible for a lot of different things. They speak to community partners, to parents, to students. They manage staff, and they have to track it all in data, and they have to make it fun, because if it's not fun, kids just won't come. And so there's a lot of different, really inspirational people that spoke to the folks at the conference, and they, I mean, these are some of my favorite ones. As I mentioned before, as staff collect all of the information that they learned at the conference, they then come back, and then we take turns, typically depending on the length of the presentation, there's two to three presentations a week, and those take place every week between March and June. And then we look at all of that, and we look at our budget, and we make decisions about what we want to spend our funds on in terms of programmatic resources. These are just some of the examples of classes and materials that we've now purchased with 21st Century grant dollars. And the majority of them are, typically they're measured, and as I mentioned before, all of this content is available in our data system called TransAct. And Autumn is going to speak a little bit about her experience going into the conference, so go ahead, Autumn.
Hi, my name's Autumn. And so, yeah, this past year in February was my first professional conference, and it was very interesting, and I feel like I gained a lot of information. So I met a lot of people, and I got to network with other site coordinators around the country. I met with a woman specifically from like Indiana who does the same program, and we just discussed like things that they do, and we got to like bounce ideas off of each other, as well as see like what was working in one state that we could do differently in New Hampshire, and vice versa. And it was really interesting to, you know, network with people and get different perspectives on things that we're doing across the nation. Other things we did were how to increase student engagement through our programming. So like, one of the things that Gail had put up before was Quircoals and Fuddlebrook, that's a STEM-based program that I've been doing at Sunset Heights for the last couple of weeks, and other site coordinators are doing it at other sites as well. And the students are really engaged with it, so it's literacy and science together. And so what we do is we read a book one day and talk about the background of what the experiment is going to hold the next day. And it's really engaging for the students as well as like academically based and aligning with the school day. Some other things I learned while at the conference was how to engage with community within the school building. So like Gail mentioned, we are partnered with like the PTO. I have to speak with the principal regularly, the guidance counselor, and school day teachers, as well as many of the staff who work for us are in high school or college. And so this is their first professional job working with students. And so we have to do all of that, and I think going to the conference and taking sessions that were based on those with professionals elsewhere was really helpful to engage with the people in the school community. So, those are some of the things I learned while I was there. I think it was really insightful and helpful for my first conference as a professional and after-school.
Thank you. So 21st Century, as I mentioned, it's a competitive grant, and the New Hampshire DOE recognizes this conference in particular on their PD calendar. And I just, if you have other questions about 21st Century programs or you want to know more information, we do have a link on the Nashua School District website, and I hyperlink it in there for you so you could, it's easier to find, but it's under Families. Does anyone have any questions for us?
So I just have a quick question about 21st Century. Is it, is it located just at the Sunset Heights? Or is it at all the schools?
No, we operate in seven of the elementary schools. It's a competitive grant, and so when we go to apply for funding, we have to make sure the school is eligible. 21st Century is Title IV B. It was put in response to the No Child Left Behind Act. And so we're only allowed to operate in schools, or schools that will be considered for funding, or schools that have 40% or more free and reduced lunch. They don't have to be a Title I school. It started out as just in the Title I schools, and now we're in both Sunset Heights and Birch Hill. So we're in seven schools right now.
Well, that's great. Do you guys, are there 21st Century sites around the state, or is it?
Yes, there's 34 different programs across the state. So Nashua is considered a program, but we have seven sites. And so as you get into other parts of New Hampshire, you'll see like in, like Marlboro, for example, it's a one site and one program, because it's a smaller community. But when you move into areas like Manchester, they have 12 locations, 12 sites.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Do you still have a site at Maine Dunstable?
We do not. So the locations, I can actually, I wonder if-
Did you, did you ever?
Not that I know of.
It's okay.
If we did, it would have been before my time, would have been under John Sipitis, but I believe that it was just, yeah, a long time ago.
But our son worked, I was going to praise the program, but he must have been, must have been a different after-school program for children at Maine Dunstable when he worked there as a high school student, but it was great.
Awesome. We're still hiring, if anybody is interested.
It was, it was, it was wonderful. Now he's a high school teacher, so.
That's wonderful.
He loved working there.
No, it's great.
Oh, that's okay. After-school is great.
Well, I, so I'm like, this, tonight, our agenda is all my favorite stuff, phonics, data, the Y nutrition program, and the 21st Century program, which was actually just starting at Birch Hill when my kids were kind of in the middle of it. And so I bumped into Gail regularly and some of the other site coordinators. And I just, I do want to praise the program for the fact that a lot of people, if you don't know much about it, you think it's just an after-school, after-care program. But it really is an engaging curriculum with, it's a lot of work that the site coordinators put in to making sure that it matches, aligns with whatever the kids are working in, on in school, and it serves multiple age groups. And I really think it's a fantastic program, and I'm glad that it's in seven of our schools. That's, that's really great. So, yeah. Anyone else have anything to add?
Sorry. I just want to apologize to the Adult Learning Center.
Oh, ALC.
For giving you credit.
No, no, no.
Also, the great, the Adult Learning Center is also awesome as well.
Yes, they are.
And just for the record, you are still hiring, and do you have, how old do you have to be to do-
Oh, you're right. ALC is wonderful. The Nashua School District's website, if anyone is interested, I think one of the priorities that we're looking for is actually teachers. We hire school day teachers to do homework club with the students. Our homework club is designed with 20 minutes, or it includes 20 minutes of reading, 20 minutes of homework assignments, and then 20 minutes of academic games, games that align with school day instruction. So we actually track K to V down to the month, what competencies they're working on, based on the Nashua School District's, like, information on their website. We've had coaches come in and speak with our staff. So having school day teachers work with students during out-of-school time is amazing for kids. It's like when you see your teacher at the grocery store, and you're like, oh my gosh, you actually, you go to the grocery store too. Our kids really like seeing them out of, outside of the school day. But certainly, any staff are welcome. We're so excited to have community partners back in the building. So all of our sites have Girl Scout troops, we have Boy Scout troops, we have STEM classes offered by high school students, we have Taekwondo presentations happening, we've got national community music schools doing music classes all year at all seven schools. So we're really trying to bring in as many opportunities as possible for our students, and none of that costs any extra to families. We also, transportation home has been helpful as well. We bring students home right to their door in the evening. We don't do bus stops, because it gets dark really quickly, like in the, now, this time of year. So we're just doing some really great things, and having our partners back in the schools has been huge. But certainly, the conference is a really important professional development opportunity for our staff, and it keeps us, I think, engaged in what is current. These GEPRA measures are things that if we're not in, if we're not meeting our GEPRA measures, then we could risk losing our funding. And I think that we have an advantage when we put ourselves in the room with people who are looking at that data and determining how best to use our data so that we can influence our program instruction and how we're operating with our, with our families and with the community. So.
That's excellent. So, yeah, make sure you chat with Mr. Frost on the way out.
I know. I'm pretty excited. I saw you the other day, but I was like, oh, yeah, you're on my list.
All right. Well, thank you very much, ladies. It's been a pleasure to have you here tonight.
Thank you. And thank you to our other staff that came that went to the conference.
Thank you all so much for coming.
Thank you. Next, we have Playworks Contract.
Thank you.
Let's introduce Susan. So we have Susan Blair, who is our new Title I Director, and she's going to talk about Playworks, the expansion of Playworks.
Good evening. Thank you for taking a few minutes to see me this evening and to learn about Playworks. So as the Director of Title I, one of the, one of my objectives is to write the grant every year with the support and help of our Title I schools. As you've heard tonight, a Title I school, a school-wide Title I school, is a school that has a free and reduced lunch count 40% or above. So this year, we actually have five schools that qualified as school-wide Title I schools, but because of COVID and all of the other things that were occurring, we have a sixth school, which is Sunset Heights, that we just target this year. So they're getting a little bit of money this year to support them in their needs with their students. So this year, as part of the grant process, I have two schools that have asked for the purchase of resources from Playworks. I believe in your packet, you received information about Playworks. But what I do want to read to you this evening is something that I found while I was preparing for tonight, that I think that will give you a depth of understanding of why the resource and the training and the PD is so important. So Playworks is a company that comes out to the schools and works with the schools directly on their individual needs. And the focus is on recess and playing and getting along and safety. But they have six key principles that I'd just like to share with you. The first one is every kid has the opportunity to play every day, from the classroom to the playground and in the neighborhood. The second principle is, kids get to choose to play and to choose games that make them happy. Number three, kids have the right tools to resolve playground conflicts on their own. Number four, adults play alongside kids, modeling and supporting a culture of trust, positivity, and inclusion. Five, play is not treated as a reward to be revoked. And number six, everyone is welcome to join in on the game, because playing together is a great way to build community. So when we hire this company to come out and work with our schools and with our teachers and our principals, those are the principles that they help the schools instill. Along with that, they use their older children as their junior counselors. So a lot of the games are supported by older children as leaders, and that helps the older, which in these particular schools are fifth graders, build their leadership skills. So this year, the two schools are Mount Pleasant and Dr. Crisp. Mount Pleasant, I don't know if you were on this committee in 2020, but they started with Playworks, and then COVID hit. And so I can't speak to whether or not they finished the training, but they did have some training. So what they'd like to do this year is just bring the training back into the school to refresh the model and to make sure they're able to carry it on by themselves, because that's the ultimate goal, is that the schools are able to do it on their own. So we're looking for a combination of $18,000. $4,000 is for Mount Pleasant School. What that includes is two consultation visits, four hours apiece, and then a 12-month subscription to Keep Playing. The other school is Dr. Norman Crisp. It'll be new for Dr. Crisp this year. So the contract is for $14,000, and what that will include is a three-hour workshop for the staff, as well as five consultation visits, and then 12-month subscription to Playworks U and Keep Playing. So the total there is $18,000. The company works with the schools throughout the school year, and I believe with Dr. Crisp, they also can call up Playworks at any time to say, we've got this problem. Can you help us with this? Can you help us resolve this? So essentially, it's helping kids utilize their recess time in a positive way, building skills that will carry them far into the future. But it's also to help with conflict resolution, because I'm sure in probably your own children or working in education, since COVID, post-COVID, a lot of children are struggling with conflict resolution and solving problems appropriately. So that's why these two schools, I'm speaking on behalf of the principals, and asking for the support and the approval of $18,000 to purchase this resource, which is also professional development. So, so the figures that you may have in front of you are a little different, and the reason for that is because Dr. Crisp asked for a little bit more. So originally, Dr. Crisp had asked for three consultation visits, and they went back and said, can we please have five? So that's why you're hearing of a different figure tonight than what Kimberly has in her presentation. So it equates to about just over $3,000 more, because each consultation is on $1,750.
$14,000?
For the two schools, correct. 14 for Dr. Crisp and four for Mount Pleasant.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
I went out and looked at all the playgrounds, like, two weeks ago, and Mount Pleasant was like so problematic with it being on that big hill. And I don't know how, like, even having a coordinator come out and help, I mean, they can't even really play any ball games, because the balls will just roll down the hill. I don't know if you guys know what kind of plans you might have or how it might work on that school.
So I know that they've had it in the past, and it's more about teaching teachers how to have recess playground time be more constructive. So it's about having specific types of games to play with the children, even on that hill where the balls all go down. So, yeah, and I spoke with Amanda about it, because two years ago, Rich Boardman was the principal, and it's the philosophy and teaching the adults how to support the children out on the playground that is extremely helpful.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I just have a question about the Playworks. So you're teaching the teachers to kind of coordinate games and facilitate conflict resolution, that kind of thing. Eventually, do they kind of back up a little bit and-
Eventually, do they kind of back up a little bit and kind of hopefully the students are going to take those lessons and play on their own and that kind of thing?
Yes, and it's also, as mentioned, the coaching part of it. So having the fifth graders run some of the games and the activities with the children so that the adults are still outside, but it is children supporting children in, in playing games and creating activities. And it's also to build confidence and self-esteem with the children with regard to everyone's included. I'm sure you remember when you were a child, you were sometimes told, no, you couldn't play. And it's about making sure that everybody's included and playing games that everyone can play.
Well, thank you very much. All right. So just to clarify, so originally in our packet, we had the amount of $15,150. And we'd like to edit that amount to reflect a total of $18,000.
That is correct.
Okay. And that's going to be paid for out of Title I. So I'm looking for a motion to recommend to the board to approve the Playworks proposal in the amount of $18,000 to be paid for by the Title I funds.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you so much. I know the principals will be very, very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate your time. You're very welcome. Thank you.
All right. And I think we're close to the end of our agenda. We've got the Hodgman Writing Method Training.
Yes, this is going to be quick, I promise. We have to get home and eat some spaghetti, at least I do. So Michelle Quadros, who is the second grade teacher at Birch Hill, she spoke earlier tonight very passionately. She was the teacher who wasn't going to get up, but then she decided to get up. She actually is one of the folks, along with Sherri Clark from, also second grade from Bicentennial. They approached me because I had distributed a book to teachers who were interested earlier in the year called The Writing Revolution. We do right now, we have the Lucy units of writing. And while there are many good qualities about the Lucy units of writing, a lot of the teachers felt like actually being able to construct a sentence, a really good sentence, at a very rudimentary level with something that students were missing. So again, I did distribute this book called The Writing Revolution. And then my friends from second grade, Michelle Quadros and Sherri Clark, they approached me and they said, hey, listen, I don't know if you realize this, but there's this incredible professional development that accompanies the book. So is it possible for groups of us to be able to engage in this professional development? So essentially, I've taken a couple of the sample classes that are actually running right now, along with some of my colleagues. The goal is to train a pretty significant number of our elementary teachers and then have them go ahead and turnkey the information. And this is called the Hodgman Writing Method. And this is what it consists of. It consists of an explicit set of sequence strategies for teaching expository writing that can be integrated into any content. Specific strategies are presented to improve the structure, coherence, and clarity of students' writing, beginning at the sentence level. The focus moves to outlines, paragraphs, and compositions. Participants, that was me, will also learn how to teach note-taking, summarization, and revisions. So, and then there's also opportunities for the participants of this professional development to practice and create activities. And, and through that process, we received some great feedback from the Writing Revolution faculty. So this professional development opportunity can be extended to basically all of our teachers. We would like to offer a cohort to our K2 students to find out how to kind of incorporate this type of, type of writing in the K2 classroom, but again, in all the content areas. But then we also wanted to be able to engage our, our STEM teachers at the, the grade levels three to 12. So somebody like Monica Tino or Beth Wheeler, they would want to be able to participate in this training. One of the things that these folks have offered is if we pay for one teacher to participate, we can have any coach or administer, administrator rather, participate alongside them at no additional cost. So that's pretty amazing because we have some principals who are very interested along with our coaches, who are very interested in also participating in some component of this writing training. And so the reason why that's beneficial for the district is certainly during the PLC meetings, principals will be able to understand the language that, that teachers are speaking and they can also give teachers some sort of actionable feedback with regard to instruction in their classrooms. I can say that, so I participated so far in the 312, just the regular 312, advancing thinking-through-writing workshops, and then also a couple of the STEM workshops. And they were extremely beneficial along with some of my colleagues who were here tonight. They also kind of piloted this training and we certainly feel as though this would be beneficial for our teachers and our students. Obviously, this would be, teachers would only sign up on a voluntary basis, but I do have teachers who are knocking down my doors to be able to do so.
Any questions?
I was just wondering like how many, the $22,000, how much, how many teachers can take the class?
So altogether, that would be 44 adults who would be able to participate in this training.
That's, that's really good, actually.
Yeah.
Any questions? Well, that sounds pretty fantastic. Now, is that a training that takes, is it like a virtual training? Is it in-person?
It's virtual. Yep, it's virtual after-school.
Okay. Okay. Well, I am looking for a motion to recommend to the board to approve the Hodgman Method Training Proposal in the amount of $22,000 as presented to be paid for by Title II and SIR funds.
So moved.
And I'll second that. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. So do we have any more informational updates?
So the only other updates really have to do with the work, the continued work that the coaches did over the summer. Certainly not going to delve into that. I think it's pretty apparent that our coaches are working overtime, but I wanted to make sure that I did highlight the work that they did all over the summer.
Yes, we had some pretty robust professional development opportunities this summer and we had a great participant rate. And I'm, we're obviously seeing a lot of people are even looking for more and thirsting for knowledge and applying it. So thank you very much and thank you for facilitating it. So does anyone from the committee have anything to add? All right. Well, I guess I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm so moved.
And want to second that, Mr. Claffey?
Was the motion made? Yes.
All right. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned at 7:39.